Here.
Mrs. Kocar.
Here.
Mr. Wazer.
Mr. Macassillo.
Here.
Mrs. Mains.
Here.
Mr. Music.
Here.
Mr. Aguado.
Here.
Mr. Somware.
Here.
Dr. George.
Pleasure to be here, Dr. George.
Dr. George. Let's slide over to you, Dr. George.
Just to give an update that myself, Dr. Tepper, and Mr. Hauser, and Mr. Watson, were able to watch an overview of the governor's budget the day after the lead keeper presented it. As far as education funding, there is a proposal of $100 million in addition in basic education money for next year, but just some other items, most of which I think sound familiar from previous budgets, talking about workforce development in the 21st century, work skills, and money being invested in various areas there. Talked about a severance tax on gas, again, which I think was in last year's budget. Talked about women and families and enhancing childcare operations, facilities, and services. He also talked about special education in relation to intellectual disabilities and people with autism, more geared towards the adult population, however, versus K-12 students. He also talked about safety and did re-talk again about the $25 per capita fee for the Pennsylvania State Police Services. I believe that's part of his budget. As well as talked about raising the minimum wage in Pennsylvania from $7.25, and his proposal was $12 per hour. All of this, obviously, is subject to conversation and debate moving forward, but there was infrastructure money earmarked for roads and bridges across Pennsylvania, as well as money earmarked for environmental protection. So as the months proceed, we obviously will be keeping eye on the education money that has been earmarked as additional money for schools. And as Mr. Watson talked about it, finance, that's something that we watch closely and we'll be updating you as you receive more information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Education and planning, Mrs. Mains.
Thank you so much. We'll start with the student report. Adam, welcome to the meeting. How's what's going on?
Well, my counterpart's saying he's under traffic. It's great. So I'm just doing all the... So the senior high, there will be a golf tournament on March 23rd, and I'll be posted here really for that. Amazing experience. At high school, there was a career fair, actually, right here, and I was fortunate enough to go to the health science room, and it was an amazing experience. You got to see a bunch of different fields, and I think that's important, again, for all high school students to be able to see those fields and probably gain ideas of what they want to do, what classes they're going to take here. For the elementary schools, there's a cultural assembly, the Javali African Acrobats. For LAS, there's a family fun line. For BS, the Rock and Read of Dawn, which is a very big fundraiser for them, is coming up. And in Mountain View, there is a jump for Heart, and I remember I did that when I was at Mountain View, and it was always a good time, and it was very good class. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. Mr. Paraka, anything to report on the enrollment?
Kindergarten registration is ongoing. We've had it past two days. We've had 81 parents sign up their children. That continues the next two days. So if you haven't registered, you're school age kindergartner, you can do that through our online portal, and the registration process continues the next two days, but you can do that at any time, even if you can't make it. So we start again.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Tepper, do you want to introduce the educational person?
Sure. Last month, you saw a presentation pertaining to a proposed schedule change here for the senior high, and this evening, we have Mr. Schibbitt and Mrs. Macassillo from the junior high presenting a scheduling proposal as well.
I just wanted to take this moment to thank you. I know that last month, Mr. Mains was in front of me talking about the scheduling proposal for the senior high, how vastly different that would look. And really, what we've been doing at the junior high, as you'll see tonight, hopefully is complementary to that, as well as we find ourselves in a unique position down there. If you want to say we're the middle child percent, but we're in between the two, and one of our biggest jobs, one of our biggest missions, is to foster that transition between the elementary to the middle school to the senior high school, and we want to try to show you that this evening. So again, I want to thank you for your time to express our ideas here. So first things first, if you just take a look at what is currently offered at the junior high school, we are currently, this year, on a 7 through 12 scheduling structure. So here, similar to the high school, we both have an eight-period day. Study halls are assigned throughout the day, and students are expected to use this time effectively. Teachers are assigned a planning period and a duty, which is typically study hall coverage. So as we explored different models of middle schools and why we wanted to reevaluate, is first, is what I said before, improve the transition. As Mr. Mains and the senior highs evolve into the lunch and learn to block scheduling, we're no longer locked in, if you will, with that schedule. We then had an opportunity to look at some other middle school models and to possibly make our 7-8 building one in its own. Secondly, we also wanted to note the research that indicates when students lose interest in schools, and that decreases over time, that decreases over the transition years, that decreases when they make that transition from elementary to middle school, and middle school to high school. That can be a very difficult transition. We understand we're serving 13- and 14-year-olds at the middle school at the top edge, and we understand socially and behaviorally and academically, we wanted to see what are other schools doing to help foster that transition. And then the last thing's at the bottom there is that study hall effectiveness. I mentioned before, students typically receive one study hall a day, but they receive a study hall that could be with a teacher that they never had in class, they are with students that they don't have. They might have a study hall, and the teacher that they really need to see to get extra help is teaching a class. They don't have time throughout the day to look at that. And so what we went, we kind of set out to do is look at other schools and what their models were to possibly foster that relationship a little bit better with study halls and see, are they really effective in the middle school? So what we found on our school business, and here's a list of the schools that we were gracious enough to have, these were all schools that have very impressive school performance profile scores. We went to South Moreland, Windover, we went the whole way out to Lower Maryland, as Mr. Mains and Mr. Paraka and the high school staff did, and we took a group of teachers with us. And one thing that I would have you note on here is just some of the commonalities, that they had teaming, common planning. Common planning, you see it again, you see the teaming approach down below, and we're going to get back to that, and you're going to see what made these schools so successful in these middle levels. So as I move on, one thing that I discovered, and Mrs. Macassillo and I discovered when you were out there, was that these schools were following what's called the National Forum to Accelerate Middle Grades Report, and better known as the Schools to Watch Program. And the Schools to Watch Program basically is a rubric that asks you to look at these four stars over here. Academic excellence, they want you to look at, how do you provide support during the day for your students? Students that need enrichment, students that need remediation, how do you do that? Developmental responsiveness, we talked about those 13- and 14-year-olds, how do we reach all students? How do we provide a personalized approach to learning? Our teachers see 120-plus students a day, but how do we zero in on that one student, especially at middle school? Middle school, to me, is such an important time for us to really individualize with those students. Social equity, teachers continuously adapt to the job learning needs of students, and then finally, that organizational support and that structure, how does the structure of our building support these things from happening? So as we looked at these schools, I told you to look at the commonalities on the list, and you saw that teaming and common planning. And so what these schools did was they went through a teaming approach. For me to explain what a teaming approach is, think about it this way, we have a seventh grade group of 300 students, we have an eighth grade group of 300 students, let's just focus on seventh grade for a second. 300 kids, they would break those 300 kids down into three teams of 100. And those, and so a single team of 100, those kids would have the same four teachers, the same four core teachers, English, math, social studies, and science. And the benefits of that were those four teachers would be off together planning every single day. They would know those kids inside and out, they would know what's making them struggle behaviorally, socially, academically, they could meet cross-curricular to do projects, they could sit, and every single day, they would be able to meet and talk and know those kids. Common planning was the next thing that they had, that was necessary for teaming, because then those teachers could get together, and they could talk about the kids, talk about what they're struggling with, and they could then devise a plan on, hey, what can we do? What can we do to remediate these students? What can we do to get them help, socially, behaviorally, et cetera? So the problem was, now we have all of these study halls, and what we found was these other schools had a singular time during the day. Upper St. Clair, for instance, had a moment in the day called "ander time." And what that was, was every single core team teacher was responsible for a study hall of sorts during that time, but it wasn't a study hall of sorts. Basically, those core teachers brought their kids back to them, those 100 kids among the four of them, and they decided who needs help and where do they need help. So for instance, if Suzie missed three days because she was sick, and she missed a math test and missed some serious instruction, that math teacher is going to say, "I want her during Wildcat time, I want her during study hall time," and vice versa. So basically, what they would do is they would share kids, they would know who's struggling in what subject, and they would trade kids, in a sense, during study hall. If the math teacher said, "Well, I need these 10 kids for sure, they're struggling, there are struggling learners, then I got to get 10 kids out of my study hall," and that team would actually work that out, and they would take their 10 kids. And it was such a great process that they would use data to determine what kids needed to be where, and it was a time of the day where we said, and we had a moment that said, "Boy, our kids have a study hall randomly throughout the day, but are they using it effectively? Are the 14-year-olds able to understand that, to use that effectively and seek it out?" This way, they were forcing those students to go to a study hall with a teacher they had and a teacher that they knew. And so that's the whole premise behind what we're looking at and what we're trying to do. So if I open up the master schedule to show you, I think this visual will help make it a little bit clearer. The change that we're proposing is probably not as noticeable to the students as Mr. Mains and Mr. Paraka's change at the senior high, but what we're looking at here is they still have eight periods during their day, but for instance, here's Team One, so this could be Mrs. Messera, she's a seventh grade English teacher. Her kids stay with her for English, they're now teamed with a Team One math teacher, so that means they will go to math class next, and then they will have a Team One science teacher and a Team One social studies teacher that they will go to. So four teachers are focused on 100 kids. You then see that seventh grade eats their normal lunch, and right after their lunch, we're going to call this Wildcat time or tutoring time for seventh grade. This is a known resource period in the past for a study hall, but those kids will all go back to their homeroom period, and those four teachers will tell them where they need to go for the day for their study period. This period right here is common planning, all of my core teachers are off during this time, and this is how they make this work. They're there every single day to plan, talk about what kids they need, what kids are struggling. We're going to stay maybe Tuesdays and Thursdays, they're going to meet with their team, but if you also notice, I have the entire seventh grade math team off, the entire seventh grade English team, so they can also use this time to meet with their fellow department members as well. Very structured, though, that they're planning to drive this, to make sure that we're putting kids in the proper spot for remediation and for enrichment. One other change that we made this year was we expanded English and math. We had this idea come from another school visit of ours. English and math will share a lab, you see a lab in there. So English and math are married, in a sense, they take up three periods of the student's day. And basically, what these students will do is they'll have English for 60 minutes, we're going to expand it to every single day, right in the middle of that class, the bell going and ring, they'll just move to the other teacher that they're teamed with, Math Seven, and they will also have 60 minutes of mathematics every single day. And so that was a slight change that we were able to make moving forward. If you scroll down to the eighth grade, just a little bit, eighth grade looks very similar, their lunch is just after the seventh grade, so their Wildcat time will be before, their common planning period just happens to be first period in the morning, where those teachers are going to direct where those students are going during that enrichment period, that Wildcat time, the same thing. English and math class, we're going to extend to 60 minutes a day, they're going to take up three periods, and we did all of this without having to cut anything else, because you're thinking, how did we expand those classes? Essentially, we added a ninth period. This Wildcat time is the ninth period right in the middle of the day, but we still have the same amount of transitions that the kids make, because they're only making one transition over three periods with English and math. So a little bit different, but we did not lose any time in civics, we didn't lose any time in science, we didn't lose any time in the electives. The one big difference to make this work was our elective classes. Our elective classes, in order to spread out and cover everything, in the past, we put kids through this, just to sort of pilot it. If you notice here, all of my core teachers are off planning, that's going to be a big elective period. Elective, oral languages, reading, et cetera. The only difference will be our elective courses, we have eight electives in the junior high school that really foster the candidates out of the career pathways and send students through kind of a little taste of everything. Those eight electives, right now, we have four in seventh grade and four in eighth grade. We're basically saying, we still have those eight electives, you can just take those eight electives whenever you want, you have to get them in over your seventh and eighth grade year. That means we will have seventh and eighth graders in electives together. But the reason we did that, because it gave us a lot more flexibility in the schedule to cover all the periods that we needed so many sessions. This is 300 kids that are off at once and need to be in a big series of electives. We plugged it in, it worked, and we were able to accomplish some big goals of ours, was getting teachers' common plan every single day, and having students have a directed remediation, Wildcat time, and enrichment time every single day, where those four teachers are experts. We can go back to that, to the slide now. Okay. So the changes for the student body, we're going to implement again that data-driven remediation and enrichment period, that Wildcat time, we're going to eliminate study halls. Math and English again will be increased to 60 minutes a day, every day, in both seventh and eighth grade. Unify our courses, open to seventh and eighth grade students. Classes, in order to make this work, classes in the other areas dropped from 42 minutes to 41 minutes, so we are only losing a minute off of the time for those other classes. Transition time in between classes will decrease from five minutes to three minutes. That sounds like a big drop, but it really, our kids are in one hallway together. We actually increased it to five minutes years ago for the senior high students. It was driving back and forth. Our students literally have classes right next to each other. And due to the change in the senior high schedule, working with Mr. Mains and Mr. Paraka, we will start our day simply eight minutes later, because of how their scheduling lunch and learn and their increase in class time. We will start our day at 7:50, we start at 7:42 for teachers now, and our day will end for students at 3:20 PM, eight minutes later than this current school year. So that's a small change. Just have this illustration up here again. We really believe that this will improve the transition between elementary to middle school, and I'll start there. We believe that because elementary students in our elementary schools do such a phenomenal job. They are in pods, if you will, of fifth graders, sixth graders, and then they come to the middle school, and sometimes, as I've watched this over the last year and a half, they overwhelm, they come to an eight-period day, they have a study hall advantage all by themselves, and do we need to take the reins back a little bit, in a sense of, we need to direct that remediation period and that enrichment period, and also for our social development, we're going to have four teachers that know those 100 kids inside and out. And then that transition to the high school, we believe this viewed very well into their proposal last month. They're doing that lunch and learn in the middle of the day, so they have time, obviously, where the students can eat lunch and then receive tutoring and remediation. Ours is in the middle of the day, just like that. Hopefully, we're preparing seventh and eighth grade students, if they know that middle of the daytime is eat lunch, and then you're going out with enrichment period. And as we transition them onto ninth and 10th grade, hopefully, we see a nice little flow of they, their learning, how to seek help, how to go to teachers, how to individualize instruction when they need it, and we really believe that this can improve that transition from our seventh, tenth, and third period. Changes for our faculty and staff, as mentioned, they just simply started 7:50, they're done at 3:25. Our core teachers will have common planning every single day, teaming students into three groups of 100 student teams, and teachers will provide direct remediation and enrichment to students they know from their team during Wildcat time. And just to explain that, the kids that are coming back to them for study hall are kids that they had in class, that they know, and that they know their needs inside and out, what they need every single day. For teachers, again, an illustration, we're going to do this team planning every single day, this will be directed by myself, this is Macassillo, our teacher readers, this will be extremely directed. We've looked at a lot of professional development models on how to direct those meetings, on what those should look like, and believe me, that's something that this structure won't do anything unless we do the work in that team planning time. And hopefully, that will lead to, that will lead to improved instruction and remediation, because those kids will be in front of those teachers every single day. So again, just what I said, I put the quote up from General Patton, that the second part of the quote, I really like, the remaining 95% is to ensure that the plan is carried out. We're going to put the structure in place this spring, but we know that we have a lot of work in front of us to make sure that this actually works and that our teachers are using data to place kids where they need to be during that Wildcat time. So thanks for your support, I know that was a lot, just trying to illustrate it for you. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
How do the teams be chosen? Will you use any criteria, or just say the first hundred, or how about that?
So that's interesting, that takes a lot of coordination with the elementary schools. What they would do is our guidance counselors will actually meet, elementary guidance counselors and junior high guidance counselors, and they will talk about student needs. One thing that we want to avoid with teaming is, we don't want to place all of our gifted students on one team or learning support student, because in a sense, they were tracking. We're going to make sure that we are spreading those equally among the teams, but we're also going to listen to the guidance counselors and the sixth grade teachers and elementary principals to say, "Are there students, unfortunately, that need to be apart from each other for learning?" Those could be decisions to be made, but there's a systematic approach as to answer your question on how you put kids in the team.
Matt, will you also try to make sure that one team isn't all from one school, that you get a diversity of all three buildings?
Absolutely. Well, that's essential, and that was a big piece on their criteria. They actually have a sheet that they handed us, that they go through, bulleted points on what you need to avoid to make tracking and make those things not happen, and kids on the same elementary, on the same team. Any other questions? Okay, thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
And as I mentioned, Dr. Mains and Mr. Paraka's presentation, I know that Mr. Schibbitt and Mrs. Macassillo have done a lot of work as they presented to you, and it really has been a lot of thought, and so we're excited to go on and chat with you, so thank you very much. Next week, we will have a presentation from the WIU Clareview School, done by Dr. Doolittle and Colin Cuthbert, one of the principals, and I think they're going to bring some teachers in, class remains, as we let you get up with this back in there. That will be on the agenda for next week. And the next curriculum committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 29th, here in the CSC at 5:30 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Mains. Finance meeting, or Finance Committee, on the, there's an attachment for the president's report and payment of bills. Our next Finance Committee meeting will be Tuesday, March 13th, at 5:00 PM at CSC. Facilities operation planning, on the agenda for your approval, will be change orders for later elementary schools. Those change orders are on your attachment. You'll have a LAS project report, also on the attachment. Facilities operation planning committee meeting minutes will be on there also, and from February 8th. And the next facilities operation planning committee meeting will be Thursday, March 8th, at 3:30 PM at the AM. Student activities and regulations, thank you.
Yes, thank you. On the agenda next week for your approval will be an approved update to the 2017-2018 club list, and it looked like it was just two that were forgotten.
Yes.
A Mountain View Speed Club and athletes from the high school. So those will be on your agenda for next week for approval for the club.
Mr. Hauser, if I could get your jet? Because that wasn't the way. I just was texting the basketball parents from the Doubletree. The boys will play Saturday versus Hotler at 1:30 at Fox Chapel. The girls will play next Tuesday, sorry I don't have to be at this, at Plum versus Shaler. And they were in Shaler once, so that's it. But they just came in, so I don't know what's going on here. That's the first round. Yeah, Plum Tuesday night, February 20th, versus Shaler, and the boys are Saturday, 1:30 versus Fox Chapel.
Thank you, Mr. Mains. House Committee Relations, Regulate, Parks and Rec Commission meeting, our minutes are exact, from December 21st. The next Parks and Rec Commission meeting will be Thursday, February 15th, 4:30 later at Municipal Building and the Green Room.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
On your original agenda, it said the minutes were from November, and that was corrected, so if you have an old agenda or something, they are December meeting, amended meeting minutes. And this is the annual report that Parks and Rec's required to do every year, and there should be one at your seat, so they were dropped off, so if you want to peruse it and you have any questions, just let me know. Thank you.
You're ready, Ms. Mains.
Okay. On your agenda next week for approval will be to approve participation in the WIU Joint Purchasing Consortium, that's pretty much a yearly item, and that would be for the 2018-19 school year. And to approve the WIU general operating budget for 2018-2019, I am recommending it as, I talked to Mr. Watson, and he's also gone over it and been presented. It's down maybe $100 from last year, I think the WIU overall, generally, is doing a good job of trying to protect our expenses, so I'm approving, I'm...
And that would be for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. And to approve the WIU General Operating Budget for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. I am recommending it as, I talked to Mr. Watson, and he's also gone over it and been presented. It's down maybe a hundred dollars from last year. I think the I U overall, generally, is doing a good job of trying to curtail expenses. So I'm approving, I'm saying, yes, let's vote for the budget for the WIU next week. And also attached, or as a summary, the WIU Board meeting minutes from January twenty-third, last, in the last meeting in January. The next WIU Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, at seven o'clock in the WIU Board.
EWC TC, Mr. Music.
Thank you. EWC TC, January twenty-fourth, attached to your agenda. The EWC TC Open House is to be on Thursday, February twenty-second, and that is from five to seven P.M. And the next EWC TC Joint Operating Committee meeting will be Wednesday, February twenty-third, at seven P.M. And that will be at the EWC TC.
Thank you. Court Paul, Mr. Mainz.
I am going to report this evening.
Technology, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Russell Price. Our next tech meeting will be here at the CFC, February twentieth, at six P.M. Thank you.
Superintendents, recommendations?
Next week, I'd ask the Board to approve the resignation of Arnold Zimmerman, Zimmerman, excuse me, as the Assistant Track Coach, to approve substitute teachers, there are three listed, as well as to support, or to approve the classified appointments of the support personnel, as well as the support personnel supplements as the two thousand eighteen coaches for the spring. That is an attachment, please review that. You can see all of the coaches and volunteers that will be working with our spring sports this spring. In addition, under Other Business, Breakfast of Champions for the month of February is this Thursday. The Color Palooza is March second at the Senior High School. It's pretty much after school till late today, right? And the Musical Inn will be performed in March, the sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth, at seven thirty P.M. on Friday, Saturday, and then in the afternoon at one thirty on Sunday. The meetings for February, excuse me, March are listed, as well as next week's meeting here at the CFC. Just a note, Dr. Pepperd and I today attended the Economic Growth Connection Annual Luncheon. Mr. Ammon from the Chamber, Mr. Redoni from the Development Board, and Mr. Smith from the Economic Growth Connection, basically presented a comprehensive plan for Westmoreland County, really setting goals and missions for what the county is hoping to accomplish. One of the things they did note is the method by which they're going to accomplish those things hasn't actually been solidified as of yet. And they are beginning focus groups next week of various constituents to collect ideas and suggestions on ways to accomplish some of these things. And so they asked if anyone was interested in providing feedback to them. They would be very welcome to hear from anyone. So just wanted to make that open invitation. It's always a nice opportunity to see and hear some things that are going on around the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. White. And from me, the jury.